Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and the justice of all.
I can ask you all a few questions. Our community lost two very special people this week. The first one is the lady who has, if you were involved in an organization in this community, she was probably involved in that organization, and she hadn't founded it, I'm telling you, because she was just an absolute wonderful person. She cared so much about everybody in this community, and that's, of course, I'm talking about Denise Hayes. Unfortunately, we lost her this week, and again, just an absolutely wonderful person. The other one, of course, is a gentleman who worked for us here in the village and recently retired, passed away way too young. If you had your tree trimmed in the last few years, if you had, if you looked at a pocket park or any of our parks over there and loved the flowers and things like that, he was responsible for it. And that was, of course, Russ Masol from our DPW staff. So I'd ask you all to keep them and your families and their families in your prayers. Thank you all very much. Tonight, again, is a very special night here. We have an extremely busy agenda, for one, but more importantly, the beginning of that agenda, we are going to swear in a new sergeant to our police department. What we're going to do is we have to go through some business first, and then we're going to bring our newest sergeant. And, you know, see, I know this guy is fire chief, Brian Norton, but the reality is, is now he will be taking on the role of sergeant in our police department as well. For those of you who don't know Brian, I think I have to talk about how wonderful Brian is and the work that he's done in the community over the years. He and his family, and both his father and mother, and Brian and his family, and Meredith and her family have been staple families and wonderful families in our community, giving back to us day in and day out. And we are very lucky today to promote Brian and make him our newest sergeant. To all of the people who have to work for Brian now, I wish you all the best. For those of you who, if you're not sure about that, ask Eddie of the firemen when he was chief, because I'm sure about his dedication, his diligence, and I can't tell you how much his giving back to this community means to all of us. Brian, we're going to go through some business now, and then we will have a great pleasure of swearing him in. Okay, with that, I'm sorry. No, we have to, we have to actually appoint him. It's just a legal thing, but I want to go first.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor.
With that, Ms. Walsh.
I would ask the board to ratify the promotion of Police Officer Brian Norton to the rank of Police Sergeant effective January 16, 2019, at a contractual rate of $158,146 plus longevity and subject to a 60-day probation every period.
I'm happy to offer that resolution to one of my first capo's soccer players.
You grant this, Brian, that's our second. Is there any discussion on this matter? Now's the time, folks. Again, with that, Ms. Walsh, will you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pabano.
With pride and pleasure.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Walde.
And trustee Pabano, yes. Thank you very much. With that, Brian, if I could bring you up and your family. Commissioner, if you could join us and hold the board. If Brian just said we didn't do this all on purpose, if you didn't understand what we did tonight, Brian was sworn in already. This is technically ceremonial, but the reality is, it's more of a great pleasure for us to get to do this and enjoy this with everyone here in this community. So again, Brian, please, gratifying. I, constituent, do solemn swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of New York.
The laws and orderlessness of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park.
And I faithfully thank, sorry, I forgot, I forgot the promise. To faithfully execute, to be a new sergeant. To the four-part police department, to the best of my ability, to help the government. Again, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, our newest sergeant, Brian Norton. Would you like to take some pictures? Yes, we'd be interested. Come on. The boss is telling you to go. And if I could, ladies and gentlemen, I just want to recognize all of our police officers and all of our first responders in the private and emergency services. Very important, makes this community special. And if you're not sure that the police department aren't doing a good job, Justice Hayes is out of justice, he'll tell you how many courts and cases he has. Again, thank you all for being here, thank you all so much. Also, just to remind you, our VP, President Bob Hadley, say the Chinese term. So Bob, thank you. We're going to get along without meeting, we have a couple of public hearings. For those of you who don't want to sit in the meeting, more than welcome to sit. This is your chance, basically. three, four public hearings, three involved, new local laws. The fourth one is a public hearing on the building. We're going to go through the three local laws first, and then the public hearing on the property. So if I could, now, Ms. Walsh, would you like to go to the first one?
Thank you, Mayor Walde. Incorporated Village of Floral Park Notice of Public Hearing Proposed Local Law Number One of 2019. Please take notice that pursuant to Article Nine of the New York State Constitution, the provisions of the Code of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park, and in the municipal Home Rule Law of the State of New York, a public hearing will be held in the Incorporated Village of Floral Park at Village Hall, One Floral Boulevard, Floral Park, New York, on the fifth day of February 2019 at 8:00 p.m. in the evening, to consider the enactment of a local law entitled "A Local Law Amending Chapter 47 of the Code of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park with Regard to Commercial Solicitation." This local law shall take effect immediately upon its filing with the Secretary of State by order of the Board of Trustees, the Village of Floral Park, New York, Susan E. Walsh, Village Clerk. This legal notice has been published in the official paper of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park, New York, as posted according to law.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. I would like to now announce that the board had previously adopted a negative declaration, meaning that the proposal of the law has no significant impact upon the environment. I would like to also read the legislative intent of this law. Originally adopted in 1943, subsequently amended in 1984 and 2003, Chapter 47 of the Village Code addresses solicitation within the village. Due to the developments in law regarding regulation of commercial solicitation, this local law amends Chapter 47 so as to address the licensing requirements of those engaged in commercial solicitation of the sale of goods and services. Okay, with that, I would ask if anybody on the village board would like to make any comments?
Just have one comment on local law, and that's in Section 47, four, where it states that the board would act within ten business days. I'd like to offer amendment to that to twenty business days, inasmuch as we don't have meetings every ten business days in the summer.
Thank you. At this point, I would ask for a motion on the, motion for the amendment of a current vote, or we can believe you that it's going to be amended. So I would ask for motion for an amendment on the amendment. Do I have a second? Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, with that, Ms. Walsh, will you please pull the board on the amendment?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pabano.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Walde.
We voted on the amendment to include it in the local law. We have not voted on the local law yet. So with that, unless anybody else has any comments, I would open it up to the floor. If anybody else in the audience would like to make any comments on this. Okay, hearing none, this is one last chance if the board would like to make it. If not, I would ask that, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing and reserve decision.
So, second.
Need discussion. With that, Ms. Walsh, will you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pabano.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Walde.
Aye. And that closes that public hearing. The next public hearing, prior to this, the next two local laws involved, the villagers' actions regarding the possibility that marijuana sales may become legal in the state of New York. Before we talk about what the intent of these laws are, and the intent of these laws are, one, to define what is marijuana, marijuana products, medical marijuana within our code. The second, of course, is to, what we're hoping to do is limit where any of these type of businesses would be allowed to open within our village. So, but prior to that, everybody knows, and we've done this before, and we've seen the effects of what marijuana can do. And to give everybody just a little bit of an education, we've asked our own lieutenant, Will Dari, who is, has become one of the experts on this, to just give a brief review of what we feel and the reasons why we are looking to do these laws now. So, Will, if you could come up? Yes.
I'm not an expert, I just did a little bit of research on part of some of the community donations, duties. Marijuana, I do believe, is going to be legalized. I don't think that's an if, I think it's a when. It has been legal medicinally in New York State since 2016, legal for fourteen discreet medical conditions, things like Lou Gehrig's disease, chronic pain, certain cancers, the list goes on and on, epilepsy, inflammatory bowel disease. So it has been legal to get prescriptions for if you suffer from a specific alienated condition, and now it seems as though, very shortly, recreational marijuana will also become legal. So from a police department perspective and from a societal perspective, there are certain concerns. The first of which is, if you think about the oath that Sergeant Norton just took, he's been brought up old, federal law, state law, and local law. Marijuana is federally illegal, still, and I don't think that will ever change. It's a Schedule I drug, which means the federal government, their actual experts, have decided that there is no pharmacological or medicinal use that is worthy of a prescription of marijuana, and there is also a high risk of abuse, misuse, and addiction. So when it becomes legal in New York State, as it has in, I think, five or six other states, we're going to have to turn a blind eye to what the federal government has decided is illegal, and I don't think that will change. So that's a concern for us. It has also been determined to be addictive and harmful by the World Health Organization, the American Medical Association, the American Association of Pediatric Psychologists, the National Institute of Health, the National Academy of Sciences, and that list goes on and on. These are people who are preeminent and renowned, who spend lots of time researching and writing, and they think it's a bad thing. That being said, it's coming. It's going to be legal in New York State. So Colorado and, I believe, Washington State were the first people to blaze this trail into legality of marijuana. Some of the things that they have encountered since it became illegal was in Colorado, sixty-two percent increase in traffic fatalities in the first year that it was legalized. Drug driving arrests doubled that year. So insert the problem that we're going to encounter in New York State without going into a long treatise on probable cause and summary arrests. For me to make an arrest of somebody without a warrant, just based on my observations alone, establishing probable cause, which is called summary arrest in our criminal procedure law, I have to determine whether or not a crime was committed, whether or not the person I'm looking at committed the crime, and whether or not a reasonable person would agree with me. That's a real simple thumbnail sketch of probable cause. So in order to make an arrest for drunk, drunk driving, I can do that based on observations, impaired condition, impaired coordination, I'm sorry not to be looking at you, impaired coordination, smells, all sorts of things, but then I make them submit to a chemical test, and they can refuse, but then they get arrested for the refusal. So I've got them either way, as long as I can establish probable cause. Comes legal recreational marijuana, people most certainly take advantage of the ability to smoke marijuana legally, because they do it illegally too. And now we can't make an observation, we can make the observation on, I'm sorry, we can make the arrest on observation, but we can't prove to a sufficient degree to put them through the system of arrest without the use of what's called a drug recognition expert. A drug recognition expert is a police officer in New York State who has gone through about forty days of training, things like pupillary reactions, blood pressure reactions to drugs. It's a sight to see when a drug recognition expert examines a defendant. There are not enough of them, and for us to send somebody can be cost prohibitive. The state has already said that we need six hundred and fifty more of them statewide in order to make arrests for marijuana-induced impaired driving, something that can get through the district attorney and into court. So that's going to be an issue that has not been considered in the legislation thus far. Other thing that we're concerned about is the fact that it's a cash business, so because it's federally illegal, you can't use credit cards to buy it. All of these businesses must take cash. Cash businesses create a lot of cash, which can be street crime provoking. We're going to worry about robberies if there comes a recreational marijuana store here in Floral Park. We're going to worry about cash on hand in burglaries. We're going to worry about a lot of things in that location that we don't necessarily worry about in a deli, or a restaurant, or car store. In Washington State, homelessness increased fifty percent that they attribute to recreational marijuana. There's an increase of four hundred percent in black market arrests. So why would there be black market arrests for people buying marijuana? Because anything that the government legalizes, they tax. The government wants a piece of it. So it's easier to get the marijuana cheaper by not going to a licensed recreational marijuana store, for lack of a word. They do, they buy it on the black market, which is a street crime, in order to avoid the taxing. Every time we arrest somebody somewhere down the line, that costs taxing money also, so that's a consideration. Washington State has the highest rate of teen drug use in the United States, and there are emergency room admissions have increased due to marijuana use. I'll just wrap it up a little bit more with some other statistics from the scientific side that we teach our kids in schools as far as marijuana, because marijuana, very often, when I teach my college students, when Officer Rochens teaches the high school kids, very often we can push back because they think marijuana is not a bad thing, marijuana's not a big deal. Unfortunately, it is. We know that it's a gateway drug, we know statistically the people who play with marijuana graduate to bigger drugs. We know that marijuana use contributes to other societal problems like homelessness, but scientifically speaking, some of the statistics that I found in a report from Hillsdale College were that, because it's only medicinally allowed for certain conditions, typically is associated with pain management, but nobody's ever done an exhaustive peer-reviewed study on the difference between marijuana usage pain and NSAIDs, which are non-steroidal anti-inflammatory drugs, although they count to like an even motion in California. Nobody's correlated it to, because it seems as though people really want to legalize marijuana. Additionally, the marijuana that's out today is three hundred times more potent than Woodstock marijuana in the seventies. Three hundred times more potent, that's something to consider. The same study shows that eleven percent of psychosis admissions in emergency rooms are attributed to using marijuana. Apparently, there's a correlation where if you're predisposed to that type of psychological issue or psychiatric issue, marijuana exacerbates it. It also appears, according to these peer-reviewed studies, to exacerbate violence in people diagnosed with schizophrenia. Why we're considering legalizing this, I don't know. And it also has a tendency to cause paranoia. So I'll leave you with, interestingly, the fact that we saw out of the heroin prevention task force, a doctor who deals with addiction told us that a phenomenon they're seeing in the states that have legalized marijuana are what's called blood tenders, right? Instead of bartenders, we have blood tenders. And these blood tenders are basically practicing medicine without a license, going so far as to tell pregnant mothers which strain of marijuana is best for morning sickness. Why we're going to legalize it, I don't know. And additionally, these blood tenders tend to advertise which marijuana strains cause less paranoia. These are things that should be left to doctors, nurse practitioners, physician assistants, not blood tenders. That's something that we're going to be concerned about when and if somebody tries to open up one of these establishments in the village. It's certainly not the police department's place to take a political stance on it, but it certainly is not without the realm of our responsibility to just bring to the fore some of the ancillary or side effects that may come along with it.
Thank you so very much. For those of you who weren't sure whether he was an expert, I think you can see what we have here. Let me make this clear. The intention of these laws, as you know, New York State, these are preemptive. These laws are preemptive. The law has not passed in New York State. But we want to make sure in the village that in any way, shape, or form, that we can control it. If we could ban it, we would, we've said that. However, based on what the provisions of the New York State law say, we cannot ban it due to our population numbers, because again, a ban can only work for those with a population of a hundred thousand or more, and also if you are a county, and the way I understand it, a township, we are not any of that. We here are banning, are doing our best, our best to control where, and if and where somebody wants to open this type of facility. And we are hopefully controlling it in what we call our B3 district, which, if you remembered a couple of months ago, we did the same thing with things like hookah bars. It would be controlled in an area, a very, very small area, just south of Jericho Town Drive, about three blocks along. And that is what we call our business district, that we would have to allow this in. So again, we cannot ban the sale, but we can control where it's going to be sold, and that's what we're doing tonight. So, and that is our hope, to make sure that this never, ever gets into the hands of any of our children, or anybody who should never see this. Okay? So with that, we're going to open the public hearing on the first local law, which again establishes the definitions of marijuana within our code. Second, we can go through that, you will have an opportunity to comment. If you wish, we also have the second public hearing, the second local law, that would allow us to put these type of establishments in that business zone three district that we talked about. Okay, so with that, Ms. Walsh, will you please, on local law number two for tonight, open the public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor Walde. Legal notice of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park Notice of Public Hearing Proposed Local Law Number Two of 2019. Please take notice that pursuant to Article Nine of the New York State Constitution, the provisions of the Code of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park, and the municipal Home Rule Law of the State of New York, as amended, a public hearing will be held in the Incorporated Village of Floral Park at Flower, at Village Hall, excuse me, One Floral Boulevard, Floral Park, on the fifth day of February 2019 at 8:00 p.m., to consider the enactment of a local law entitled "A Local Law Amending Chapters 99-3 of the Code of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park," entitled "Definitions to Define Marijuana, Marijuana Product, and Medical Marijuana." This local law shall take effect immediately upon its filing with the Secretary of State by order of the Board of Trustees, Incorporated Village of Floral Park, New York, Susan E. Walsh, Village Clerk, in the state of January 30, 2019, and this legal notice has been published in the official paper of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park, New York, as posted according to law.
Thank you very much. With that, I would like to announce that the board had previously adopted a negative declaration, meaning that the proposed local law has no significant impact upon the environment. I would like to also read the legislative intent of this law. This local law amends zoning sections of the code so as to include definitions for the terms marijuana, marijuana product, and medical marijuana. With that, I will open it up to our village board, if anybody has any comments. Not right now. Okay, I would also now open it up to our residents and the public. Does anybody have any comments on local law number two? Okay, with that, none being heard, I would ask that for motion to close the public hearing and adopt the local law. So, Will? Okay, Ms. Walsh, will you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pabano.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor Walde.
Okay, thank you. Now, Ms. Walsh, we can move on to local law number three.
Legal notice of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park Notice of Public Hearing Proposed Local Law Number Three of 2019. Please take notice that pursuant to Article Nine of the New York State Constitution, the provisions of the Code of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park, and the municipal Home Rule Law of the State of New York, as amended, a public hearing will be held in the Incorporated Village of Floral Park at Village Hall, One Floral Boulevard, Floral Park, on the fifth day of February 2019, at 8:00 p.m. in the evening of that day, to consider the enactment of a local law entitled "Local Law Number Three of 2019," amending Chapter 99-18 of the Code of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park, to include marijuana retail store or marijuana dispensary in the B3 district only. This local law shall take effect immediately upon its filing with the Secretary of State by order of the Incorporated, by order of the Board of Trustees, Incorporated Village of Floral Park, New York, Susan E. Walsh, Village Clerk, and this legal notice is dated January 30, with the legal notice. January 30, with the legal notice being published in the official paper of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park, New York, and posted according to law.
Thank you very much. And I would now like to announce that the board had previously adopted the negative declaration, meaning that the proposal of law has no significant impact on the environment. And I would also like to read the legislative intent of this law. This local law amends the village code so as to provide that a marijuana retail store or medical marijuana dispensary may only be located in a B3 zoning district. With that, I will open it up to our village board, if anybody has any comments they would like to make.
I will, thank you. As a lifelong educator, including the former superintendent of schools, I find it reprehensible that we're in this position here tonight and receiving you tonight considering this legislation. In our school district and throughout New York State, ironically, it is required that kids K through 12. We have strong and comprehensive substance abuse prevention education programs that must be taught in our school. This obviously includes education about the dangers of marijuana as our students get into the upper elementary and high school grades. This is required by New York State. And yet, we're now in a position where our state leaders and government are saying that it is legal to do this, it is okay. And by the way, we're not even giving, at this point, villages the discretion to be able to make their own laws prohibiting its use in their village if the residents, if the business owners, if the village government so decides this is not for our village. And I think clearly, our board has made the point that we strongly feel that way by inviting Lieutenant Dari here tonight, who works in our schools, has worked in our schools with Officer John Rochans for many years, imparting some of that same education for our students at the appropriate grade level, with their appropriate levels of understanding, to prevent our students from engaging in the use of this kind of dangerous substance. So the fact that we're here considering this legislation tonight is very distasteful to us as well, too. I do want to add just a little bit about the restrictions that the law imposes. It's some reassurance that any kind of legalized use by New York State will be very highly controlled here. But the fact that it couldn't be here at all, as I said, is not a good prediction of things to come in our future, and we hope that we won't reach that point. But in terms of restriction, the one, any of the above uses, which we're talking about with marijuana, shall not be located within a 200-foot radius in any area of zone residential use. So there is a radius there. Any of the above use shall not be located within a one-floor block radius of another similar use. And any of the above uses shall not be located within a 250-foot radius in any school, church, or the place of religious worship, park, playground, or playground. So in addition to limiting them to a very tight zone of the village, the B3 district, there are also distance restrictions on how close or how far it must be from these places, which tend to attract children to them. We appreciate you all coming out tonight, and we certainly consider your comments, but do want you to note that, as Mayor O'Leary said, he stole the news they are told yesterday, this is not by any means the choice, if we had a choice, that we would make to legalize it in any area of our village.
Mr. Chang?
You know, one of the great things about living at Floral Park is we see all the benefits that we have. We see our police department, our fire department, our library, our pool, our playground, and all the other things that I'm not going to mention. One of the unseen things that people don't really realize is the fact that being a village, we have our own zoning laws. This is the shield that we, as a board, who isn't mayor and the board secretary, can utilize to protect our residents when higher authorities tell us, "No, you can't protect them." But this is our village, these are our laws. And as long as they're reasonable and they conform a lot of rules, I go, this will work to the best we can do.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to come? With that, we will open it up to the floor. So any of our residents or business owners who would like to come?
I just have a question.
If you'd please come up, if you'd please come up to state your name and be sworn in, like, okay? Because this is a matter of public record. Okay? So thank you.
Do you swear on the testimony that you agree to the truth of all truth in connection?
I do.
Your name and address?
Melanie.
Herder, H-E-R, G-E-R.
And your address, Mr. Herder?
Resident of Flower Park, 46 Main Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
I just have a quick question. I'm familiar with the zone you're talking about, exactly where it is.
The B3 zone is basically, if I had to give you just an idea of where it is, it's right behind Stella's Restaurant on Jericho Turnpike. So it's the blocks behind there, and we have sort of an industrial area just north of what would be the parking lot, the two most far parking lot. So it's right in that area.
It's not on Jericho, then?
It's not on Jericho, it's just south of Jericho, yes.
It's south behind Stella's, but yeah. That was my question, would you please?
Thank you so much. If I could ask that you'd be sworn in, and then please state your name and address, all right?
Do you swear on the testimony that you agree to the truth of all truth in connection?
Thank you.
Kathleen Lyle, I think it's a quote of a gentleman.
I'm going to play devil's advocate here. I don't know whether I agree or disagree with what I'm about to say, but something about the reading of the law has real little to do. When we say a marijuana shop and we include dispensary together, as of now, it is legal for a dispensary marijuana. Now, are we, are we able to put that in the same to the recreational shop? Or are we going to be challenged on that? And I'm only saying, if I have a family member who uses medicinal marijuana, I will tell you from our point, it is very effective. It's a child with autism who has seizures. It has proven to be very effective. I would say my sister-in-law was probably one of the first on mine when it became legal. She's 20 years old, we've seen her different. I'm not saying we need to have dispensaries at Flower Park, I'm not asking, I'm not stating that, I don't want people thinking I'm promoting that. What I'm asking is, by putting the two together, the recreational end of it and the dispense end, are we going to be challenged when it comes to, could we be challenged in court because we're saying a dispensary has to be limited to the R3? I don't have an answer on it, and I'm not...
Well, that, if I could just respond. That's the whole point of enacting it the way we have done it, that we are not banning it. We are limiting it to that area where it can be opened, and there isn't a place where it can't open if the terminal was taken out for it.
Right, but I'm just saying, the dispensary now is legal already.
Yeah, but then we've had no applications to open one.
Right.
So now we have a law that says you can open it in this location.
All right, so it won't be challenged if, the shop won't be challenged if we're doing this?
I didn't say that.
Anybody think it should be challenged?
Okay, I understand.
And I'll read that up to the board.
All right, I just wondered whether by putting the two of them now, dispensaries are, you know, in common, I mean, they're in shopping malls, they're in, I don't know, like, this or I think it's more. But there's different, you know, places that it is acceptable, and it's not considered, I don't know what I would say. You know, we're looking at shops, we're saying, oh, God, no. But I'm looking at dispensaries, and I'm saying, I know, it doesn't, it did not have a negative effect on our community. So I'm just talking out there, playing devil's advocate, that's it. I'm not looking for a fight.
And again, slightly, thank you very much, because those are the discussions we all have as we're proposing laws. But the reality is, as Trustee Chang said, and John Ryan, our village attorney, said, the hope is that, yes, if somebody does give us an application to open up a dispensary, they are now limited to this area. Okay? Is there anybody else who would like to be heard? Okay, again, I thank everybody for their comments. I'll give the board, the village board one last chance at the one person. Okay? If not, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the local law. Ms. Walsh, will you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombadon.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chiara.
Aye.
And Mayor O'Leary.
Outside. And I give it up. Yes. Lieutenant Dari, thank you very much. I thank all of our residents who were here, and commented on these laws as well, because it's very important for us to hear what we got to say on this. We are now going to have a public hearing, our last public hearing for the night. And this one is in regard to an application to maintain a two-family dwelling on Iris Avenue. So with that, I am willing to, once she's ready, ask Ms. Walsh, will you please open the public?
Thank you, Mayor O'Leary. Legal notice of public hearing, Incorporated Village of Floral Park, New York. Notice is hereby given to the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park, New York, or call the public hearing at Village Hall, One Floor Boulevard, Floral Park, New York, on Tuesday, November 5, 2019, at 8:00 p.m., in relation to the following application. The application of Robin Yenan, co-owner, for a special use permit under Chapter 99, Article 7, Section 99-46, to allow the enlargements of an existing non-performing two-family residence in an R2 district is not in the required plot with an R area. This application is made in accordance with Article 7, Section 99-46, of the zoning ordinance of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park, New York, which requires that any enlargement or extension of a non-performing use may only be authorized as a special use after a public hearing. The structure for which said special permit is applied is situated on the west side of Iris Avenue, 160.21 feet north of Foundation Avenue, and is known as 86 Iris Avenue, Section 32, Block 120, Block 216, on the National Planning Tax Map. A copy of the application is on file in the office of the Village Clerk, One Floor Boulevard, Floral Park, New York, and may be sent by any persons interested there and during business hours, Monday through Friday inclusive, except legal holidays from 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Now, take notice that all parties and interested citizens will be given the opportunity to be heard at the aforesaid time and place. By order of the Board of Trustees, Incorporated Village of Floral Park, New York, Susan E. Walsh, Village Clerk, is dated January 23, 2019, and this legal notice has been published in the official paper of the Incorporated Village of Floral Park, New York, and posted according to law.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. I would like to place on record that the applicant had previously filed an affidavit of service indicating that all neighbors within a 200-foot radius of the dwelling had been served with notice. With that, I would ask our applicant, I was going to ask you to come up, but you were settled, but I was going to ask you to please be sworn in, and, please give your presentation. Thank you.
Do you swear on the testimony that you agree to the truth of all truth in connection?
I do.
Are you speaking, Officer?
Uh, you sure?
Do you swear on the testimony that you agree to the truth of all truth in connection?
I do.
Just a few minutes.
Good evening, my name is Kenneth Garvin, I'm an architect. I reside at 5058 Avenue in Village of New Heights Park. My name is Aubrey Agani, 27th Mayor of Rockaway, from the Sheriff of New York. I intend to become one of your residents.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees, thank you for hearing us today. My client purchased a house that was, had a fire, and he bought it last year in March, and it's been sitting there, looking to renovate the home. The home was, there's major damage done, the interior had a fire in the basement, the four joints are basically need to be replaced in the major middle part of the house. Looking at the project with my client, we realized that there's going to be extensive renovation for the home, inside and out. And what we're trying to do is make the house better than it is currently today, or laid up. So we're trying to improve the layout. It is an existing two-family house, and will remain a two-family house. It's in the zone R2, which allows two-family homes. And what we're proposing to do is do three expansions on the property. The rear of the house, we're looking to do an addition, a two-story addition that's going to go out five and a half feet from the back of the house, and extend 14 foot 10 along the rear. It is, it's not, you know, a very large of an addition. We have room, if you look at the code and setbacks, we could probably make it larger if we wanted to, but we're just trying to make it enough to make the rooms inside the house more livable. The other addition we're doing is on the side of the house, where currently is, I'm going to point to a picture, is this bay structure that pops out, and that, again, with this damage from the fire, the four joints that extend over the foundation wall create this overhang. We're planning to remove that and put in something very similar to it, but with square off, and it's only drawings that we've had. And in the front of the house, we're looking to include an expansion of the living room into the front porch area. And this, this area, this expansion, will do two things. It will allow for the footprint inside of the residents to be more open, and allow for separate entrances to go into the first floor, rather than sharing entry with the resident from the second floor. If you look at the floor plans... Could I ask for a favor? Is there anything that you can turn on so residents could see that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. We have copies of the...
Okay. I'm already explaining that. Right. Currently, the existing floor plan, in the back of that house, there's a bedroom, and the size of the room is six foot six by 12 feet. Very odd shape for a bedroom, it has a closet and everything. So the main reason we want to do this rear addition is to make that bedroom, you know, really, we can see for things like bedrooms. So we're looking to expand out to back five and a half feet to increase that area for that bedroom. Also, on the second floor, the kitchen that's currently there is also six foot six in depth. And I don't have a picture of the way it's laid out now, because it's fire damage, but I don't know how they cook the meal in that kitchen. It was like a closet. So the addition on that also included the kitchen on the second floor. The, when drawing A2, you can see what the expanded rooms would look like, the kitchen and the bedroom on the first floor. Also, the other rooms on the first floor, the bathroom, was, it was like so small, it's not, you know, like a mall had a bathroom. It looks like there was a lesson in idea, always put a bathroom there. So we tried to design it so it's more functional, and a nicer layout for the resident of the Village of Floral Park. The area in the front of the house would go into the front porch, it's the front porch. And it basically still has the porch areas. It's going to take up, right now, there's a two column area, it's going to fill in that column area, but still leave an area for where you come off. And at that point, we'll have one door that goes to the first floor, residents, and another door that goes right out to the second floor, residents. Again, if you could just show that to our residents, we'll give them, there's a rendering, a rendering of how it would look, and this is what it looks like today. So this would be a wall with windows, and then there would be a door over here. Also, this is a rendering of the side view of the home, that we're, you know, we're designing it like this, we still need to go in front of Mr. Gunther on the Board of Architecture Review Board to get this approved, and we'll work with the board to make sure that the specs is something that the village would like. The, my client, again, has owned the house almost a year, and it's just sitting there. It is just vacant, doesn't look that great, and he is motivated to, to work on it. And they are motivated to, to work on this house. They want to, they want to get it done, they want to fix it, they want to make it livable again and make it something that everyone in the neighborhood will like to look at. They are, you know, proposing to do this work to improve the existing structure. It's, it's not, in my opinion, it's not going to create any kind of detriment to the community and for aesthetics for, uh, with impacting environment. It's in keeping with the architectural characteristics of homes in the village. Majority of this addition is in the back of the house, not in the front. And I feel that, uh, it might be a nice way to modify this home to make a better quality of life for the resident who lives in it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a quick question. Is the attic going to be used for living space?
Excuse me?
Is the attic going to be used for living space?
Uh, not me. We put mechanical equipment up there, air handler for heating and air conditioning.
And do you plan on renting it totally? Or is, is any family, are you the type of family?
The plan now is for us to move in there, married with one child, and my brother-in-law is going to be a baby, and then we'll live upstairs. Obviously, they will pay the portion of rent, sort of portion of mortgage.
That's a bad comment. It's awful. Okay, so it would be, you would be a family, family, yeah. I would now open it up to the board if they have any questions.
Yeah, I do have a question. Uh, I guess a question for me, the village attorney, not her, I know, so I was supposed to be. Are there any zoning permits required for this?
No. No, it's only a special use permit.
Thank you.
I think they do have to go to ARB.
Yes, we need to go to ARB. All the modifications we're making are within the setbacks, and you are allowed 30% block coverage of the development in that zone. We're looking at 23% as a max.
Okay. Any questions?
Uh, just one, just confirming, and you're not expecting to move closer to the neighbor's homes on the side of the street?
No, the, uh, the side addition is going to replace what's already there. The only thing is it's going to go to the left and right a little bit more because right now it's on angles. It's like a, it's like a bay window, but it's a bay, uh, extension. And we're going to just square it off so it's, it doesn't have the angles anymore.
Does anybody else? May I ask you two young ones to sit down if you don't mind? And I'm going to open it up to the floor in case any residents or neighbors have any questions or comments or would like to make any additions. Sorry, I can't see behind that, so thank you for asking. Can I ask you, please come up, be sworn in and give your name and address?
I swear from testimony about to give the truth or do you want to? Your name?
I, G.I., U.S., D.B., I live right next door to the house in question, and it has been a long process, as I'm certainly aware, it's been two years since that house burned down. It's, uh, looks pretty bad, so I'm definitely looking forward to things being fixed. And I think, uh, the trustee answered, asked my question. I'm just concerned because I live on the side where we are planning to kind of square it off. How much are you, do you know more or less how much closure you plan to have to our property? Is there just an indication of that?
This is, this is existing side wall here, we're just extending out from that five and a half feet. So this is, this is kind of a side plan right here. This is, this is that bay window thing, so we're just going to square it off. Just coming in this way, about five feet to the back.
Okay, but you're not going to be closer to this?
No, no. And, uh, let's see. Okay, so it's going to, we should straighten it out, and we might even shift it this way, you know, but this is not going to come.
Show the rendering, might be a good idea to show the rendering.
Yes. So this is, this is the side view, so basically this is all happening here. Right, this here, this is everything. And this is, or, you know, these are here.
Well, that's...
Yeah, this, but this is just going to be, we're going to square it off. But the roof is going to come out just the same now. So this is not coming out, this is not coming out more. Okay, I mean, that's, that's my biggest concern because it is a regular lot, and it's pretty close to my property line already, so I'm a little bit concerned about coming closer than it currently is, so.
Just for the record, he answered all your questions. I'm not sure if this is the number of other things you guys would talk about, but for the record, he answered a question.
Yes, yes.
Do you like the rendering?
Yes.
I'm glad you're the one who's currently there. I haven't read any lights or anything like this, so I'm not much closer.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, I see a hand going. Yes, thank you.
How are you? Do you swear from testimony about to give the truth or do you want to? Very holy to Iris Avenue, and I'm on the other side of this house. I have a few concerns. Iris Avenue is a very narrow street. There's only parking on one side of that street. This house is a two-family, as you know already. I'm concerned about driveway, the driveway being packed with cars and then going to shuffle cars. There's only one side of the street to park. As it is, it's very difficult for us, you know, in a one-family, uh, for the parking situation. I'm also concerned with coming out, coming back. It feels like Queens, you know, a little not the ability to look in the backyard when I look, sit in my yard, I'm going to be looking at house, house in the front, house in the back, house everywhere. So that's my concern. It is, of course, um, any, you know, happy that they bought it and is going to try to improve it and acquire, but I'm just not really happy about an expansion, you know. bigger two families, more people going to live there, you know, how many cars they're going to have, so, um, that's my concern.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Uh, my name is Gregory. Oh, sorry. Okay. Do you swear from testimony about to give the truth or do you want to? And your name? Gregory Edler, 78 Iris Avenue, one more house from Mary. Basically, everything that she said, the, the idea of Queens is, is a big problem for us. I have a three-year-old, cause kind of race down that block. It's a major hub for everybody that does their shopping on, you know, Tulip Avenue, so we got to deal with that regardless. But it is a very tight block, the parking, everything is a situation. But I do, it is a cute block, houses are, are nice lined up. I go out in the yard, we're on top of each other as enough as it is already. So to look to my left in the backyard and see another house sticking out, it just, want to see trees, floral plants, is, that's its beauty, you know? So don't want to take anything away from that, so I just wanted to say my piece.
Thank you very much. Any comments? Is there anyone else? Sir?
Hi, it's called in Canisera on 87 Iris, across the street from that question. I have a couple of questions, not really for, for property law or anything like that. Are there occupancy limits on a two-family house as it is? Does the expansion increase the, our debt, the occupancy limit in a matter of, you know, 100 people living there versus 100 people that are there? Are there any limits in the cap?
Actually, there isn't. We'll be canceled for that. Actuancy limits?
There is none. It has to be family on each floor.
Okay.
So, that's by definition, if you look at the code, it has to be family related.
Another question, is there any, I see the owner's listed as an LLC, I'm working on LLCs. Is there any significance between, about an LLC owning a private property? Is, is that mean anything in terms of who can live there and how the property can be used? There's no significance.
Some person can only be used as a gentleman's property.
Okay. And then this is more of a, maybe not the correct form, but to my chance I had to address the, the buyer. The house has been empty for two years now, I came home for my year. I lived on the street. In that year of the law and maintenance, um, there's broken bottles of garbage all over the, all over the front of it, um, snowing up and shuffled. A delivery capacity is going to be taken care of along the construction process dates, but I have a certain place just going to see while it's, I mean, I live there, you know, at one point there's something that can be, you know, done to make sure the place is maintained as much as possible for us to go. That's my concern.
We would ask the owner to do that, but we also have on property maintenance laws and codes that we can enforce, so.
Okay.
Go ahead. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to be here? Is there any? No more? Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. Good to see you.
Uh, my name is Frank O'Connor. I live in 71 Iris Avenue.
I have to swear you on this.
Okay.
Do you swear from testimony about to give the truth or do you want to?
Yes, I do.
And your name is Jessica.
Francis O'Connor, 71 Iris Avenue. Okay, I live a couple of houses up the block, and as far as I'm concerned, you've gotten off on the wrong foot with the rest of the neighbors. By virtue of the fact that you didn't mow the lawn, you didn't maintain that, there's weeds all over your property, and there is some litter there also, that's no way to start a relationship with your new neighbors. And I hope that, uh, in the future, you're going to have more respect for your neighbors. I, 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 I'm suspect now, I'm not sure what you're going to do there. I hope it's the right thing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Is there anybody else who would like to go? If not, if the applicants would like to address any of the issues that have been raised?
Thank you for the residents who have come out tonight and, and making their comments about the property. I agree with all the comments. I mean, I, I feel that the, the parking on the driveway issue can happen whoever lives there. It's one family or two. I got three boys, they drive. I got flat cars, I'm juggling cars all the time. And I have a little kid, so I understand that, and, and you guys have boys, you can't park in the street, and they have to, whoever lives there, if you live there, you know, you have them live by the wall. The maintenance, of course, uh, my client will make sure that, that property is taken care of, have people go there and clean it up. The, the other item about time, they, they are, they even call me, what's going on at Floral Park, it's not mine, it takes time, but if, if the mayor and the board of trustees agree on the expansion or seeking, is there any way that we can try to have the mayor and the board, have the building department do an expedited review so we can get into construction? That's, that's something that we're looking for. I mean, we have got ARB, a few approvals, and then we have got, you know, a building permit, and we just need some kind of mechanism to have us be able to go quicker with the construction process.
I can tell you that we will review this, as we do with everything. I don't want to keep us to a timeframe, but again, we will review and do course as, as quickly as possible. We have every pro business pro, you know, making sure that we can do what's right. I am not going to tell you whether this is granted tonight or not because I think, you know, we take very serious how, how the business consideration and concerns, so they will be reviewed to the fullest, so.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board of Trustees, for your consideration of this application.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there more than three more questions? Okay, with that, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing and reserve this review. The board will be pulled over.
Trustee Fitzgerald, single witness, Dr. Pabana. Did you want to speak on this?
This issue? No, not on this.
This issue? It's going on this issue.
Sorry, it's not. Yeah, good job.
All right, for the mayor, okay. Ms. Walsh, will you please?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pabana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Loeb.
Again, gentlemen, thank you very much for all our residents who came back. Thank you very much, and all their concerns will be taken into consideration. Thank you. Okay, with that, we will be having our regular board meeting now. So tonight, like I said, is a very busy night, so, uh, we will be having a couple of comments shortly after our board meeting. Okay, so we're going to go through a regular board meeting, and then we'll open it up to the floor for, okay? Okay, one, thank our senior members. Also, thank you very much. It's a busy night. With that, Ms. Walsh, please move, ladies and gentlemen.
I would ask the board to approve the minutes of January 16, 2019.
Any discussion? Any laws in favor? I have a question to just carry on.
I would ask the board to approve the schedule of the cash table consisting of the above, general fund, $1,125,000, 38,72, 24,50, community development, 0, capital fund, $131,000, 78,000, for a grand total of $1,262,211,22. I don't have a question.
Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pabana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Loeb. I would ask the board to approve Steve DiGiulio as a new member of the Floral Park Board of the Department, having received Austin clearance from the National County Sheriff's Office of Background and check from the Floral Park Department and national clearance of Dr. Coby. I don't have a reservation.
Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pabana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Loeb. I would ask the board to approve Steve DiGiulio as a new member of the Floral Park Board of the Department, having received Austin clearance from the National County Sheriff's Office of Background and check from the Floral Park Department and national clearance of Dr. Coby. I don't have a reservation.
Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pabana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Loeb. I would ask the board to approve the request of Rosia Lacy, Troop Number 17, 92, High Vibe Hall, held upon the 4th day, it's on March 29, 2019, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m., subject to receipt certificate of insurance.
So, any discussion? I remember those days. All those in favor? Opposed, it is carried.
I would ask the board to determine that the special use permit application made by Mr. Patel, PC, of 17th Avenue to operate a retail store that sells food is a type-two action, and that term is defined in secret.
I'll offer a resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pabana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Loeb. I would ask the board to determine that the special use permit application by Ray Chang, owner of 84th Avenue, to construct a deck on a non-performing lawn is a type-two action, and that term is defined in secret.
I'll offer a resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pabana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Loeb.
What's up?
I would ask the board to authorize the developer funds to, um, excuse me, Melanie McGowan, Tricia Fox, and Elizabeth Laza because the part two in class of the Red Center was cancelled due to lack of enrollment.
I'll offer a resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pabana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Loeb. I would ask the board to approve that the individuals listed below be appointed inspectors of election for Village Elections being held on March 19, 2019, compensation to the $110 per day for Election Day.
I'll offer a resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pabana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Loeb. I would ask the board to red fire the request of Rosia Troop 42 to use High Vibe Hall on Sunday, February 3rd, to hold a legal ceremony, subject to receipt of certificate of insurance.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, it is carried.
I would ask the board to approve request of 3TC to use Palm Stasis at Playfield in terms of use for, pertaining to the beginning of the work, for the installation, for the maintain walk, and authorize the village administrator to sign the provision letter as proposed.
I'll offer a resolution. Okay. Any discussion? Ms. Walsh, will you please pull the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pabana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair. Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longbow. I would ask the board to accept the filing of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, intended assessment role for the village required by February first, two thousand nineteen, according to the provisions of section three oh five of the real property tax law.
I'll offer that resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please call the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longbow. I would ask the board to authorize the repair of a car to vehicle, two thousand seventeen, hot-dive, damaged by a village vehicle in amounts of one thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-six, as proposed at the calling. I would ask the board to...
Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please call the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longbow. I would ask the board to authorize the request of Nassau County Assessment Review Committee to use the recreation center on Thursday, February fourteenth, from six to eight p.m., to host a tax week seminar on how to read Nassau County taxes for the residents of the ballpark.
So, move. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? It is carried.
I would ask the board to authorize the village administrator and mayor to sign stipulation with C.S.C.A. to recognize the title of principal clerk at grade eighteen in C.S.C.A.'s collective bargaining agreement.
So, move. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please call the board?
Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Pombana. Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longbow. And finally, I would ask the board to promote Laura Delaney, currently a senior clerk for the court office, to the position of principal clerk at contractual rate of fifty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars, degree eighteen, plus one hundred.
I'll offer that resolution. Second, any discussion? Ms. Walsh, would you please call the board?
Trustee Pombana. Trustee Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Trustee Chang.
Aye.
Trustee Chair.
Aye.
And Mayor Longbow.
Aye. Thank you so much. Again, it's been a long night. Board reports, starting with our deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regards to Belmont Public Affairs, yesterday, the impressive government extended the deadline to comment on D.E.I.S. from February eleventh to March first, five p.m. We do want to thank the E.S.D. for this additional time. Comments, documents, and issues are quite light. So, during the past week, the village sent letters to the Nassau County Executive, the Nassau County Planning Commission, the Town and Hesitance Supervisor, and the board. The context of the letters is requesting each body undertake a full and independent track study of the impacts of the project agreement for local communities. Additionally, the letter describes portions of the early development corporation plan, which the E.S.D. operates under, that allows the aforementioned governmental bodies to review, potentially reject, the general project plan. On Thursday, the village administrator, Bamber, attended the Nassau County Planning Commission meeting to further alert them to the issues surrounding this project and their potential ability to accept or reject the general project plan. Separately, and as we speak, two members of the Belmont Task Force were at the Town and Hesitate Board meeting, and were staying on speaking and alerting the town, the town board of the same. I would like to thank them all for their time this evening on that. On Saturday, Mayor Longbow, the village administrator, Bamber, and myself, Matt the Senator, State Senator Kaplan, to discuss and educate the newly elected Senator of four parts concerned with the now standard spoke of the project. We would like to thank the Senator for taking time to meet with us, and we feel that she now has a full understanding of how and why this project is currently proposed will be a significant detriment to four parts of our neighbors. Additionally, the Nassau County Builders' Association issued a statement on the Belmont Park redevelopment, which states apart, quote, "that any approval be conditioned on and required at the current railroad station be transformed into a full service station, and that develop there a all-cause associated in the upgrading of the station." I would like to thank the officers and the executive board of the Nassau County Builders' Association for ensuring this statement. And lastly, we still receive letters signed by our residents that will be directed to the E.S.D. and to our letter officials. To date, we received two thousand and fifty-three letters. I'd like to thank the residents that have signed, and a special thank you to the residents that have been proactively collecting those letters, sort of things of those to monitor and comment and make sure that we are protected in this ongoing issue.
That's what he does. Great. Thank you. Back to the board.
Thank you. First, for the four part post office, I'd like to thank, thank the conference we have, the councilwoman, athlete, and her staff, when they worked with the federal government and getting the exterior floor block post office painted last year. They are so this important building that leads the way to our village has improved significantly. Representative Rice's office is now working with our village officials to replace the aging alcove in the elevator lift, which provides access between the front entrance and the post office counter services, a level higher. As the lift is replaced, customers needing assistance may call the post office number four three seven six six two one over in the outside elevator, which will be available to help those customers. We'll have this number printed in the report as well as in the gateway copy so that our residents can see. And I did try that number, had a very nice man who said, "Yes, we have the app and help anybody who is interested on those apps." For our fire department, I'd like to also thank Assistant Chief Jeff Dotson and his electric chief, Michael Ford, for being here tonight and their wonderful service they provide to our residents. The fire department is proud to announce the new active truck, the one twenty-seventh, on service. It replaces the previous twenty-seven-year-old active truck and has features recommended by the National Fire Protection Association, that make safety, improve performance, and efficiency. And a number of different features made it possible for our firefighters to get work on the fires more quickly, as well as find routes more safely to reach second floors and rooftops, and remove closing and get those loaded trucks so they can use them to fight the fires. Also, the compartment that accommodates all the bunkery that our firefighters have to wear as they handle the fires. So when you see the new active truck, the Atlanta Bay Area Firehouse, or the Annapolis Village, these are all the firefighting safety features, and thank our fire department for the one hundred and twenty-five years of valuable service to our village. And for the Copper Avenue Chamber of Commerce, I want to remind every flooding floor park that during the partial closures on Copper Avenue, all our wonderful stores, restaurants, professional offices, and other establishments will be open to business, and then the shop will be doing the third track construction project.
Thank you very much. Trustee Chang.
As for the library, there are two adult programs I think everybody should go about. On February eleventh, seven o'clock, they take a challenger tax assessment being presented by Tom Flager, the Super Taxist from the Town and Hesitate. And the AARP Tax Help Program is in full gear. If you call the library, you can schedule an appointment for assistance in preparing the tax returns. I'm gonna say the police department, point over the S.J. statistics, but we're counting tonight, so I'm gonna hold that one off. We are going to start introducing two more police officers, and hopefully we will be pleased to be part of mentoring around the fires in the next whole month. As for the third track, there will be a partial closure of Copper Avenue north of the mainline tracks between Jericho Turnpike, starting tomorrow, and continuing once through two fifty twelve. This is not a closure that everybody is ready. That should be at the end of March, beginning of April. So we are monitoring this. Last week, we noticed they announced they were going to do it. We immediately put out, we had a visual out that sign that says, "This is your speed." Not only does that count as vehicles, because we wanted to get a baseline of how many people use Copper Avenue on a regular day without block, without closures in October. We're gonna have it out there this coming week, also to see how many people respond to the signs where they see obscure avenue as you come west, because there's a sign there saying, "Copper has a detour." And we're trying to make plans. We can't make plans in the dark yet, we wanna see what kind of increase in traffic we have. Tyson, work on the west side of the unit now is almost done. They shipped it over today to set up on the east side, so all the blockage of the sidewalks on the west side has now been reopened. The east side is now closed. We will have an extra crossing guard to enable the aid out, as well as the flagging at times. But the crossing guards will be there on the south side of the mainline tracks and on the north side of the mainline tracks. But let's be truthful, that had been pulled.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Chair.
Thank you. Up at the rec center, all of our recreation session two programs that kicked off this week. Preparation underway for the summer of two thousand nineteen recreation pool season. Both the recreation and pool committees met last week to discuss the upcoming season and ways to enhance the guest experience at our facilities. Up at the pool, I'm happy to announce the membership rates will remain the same as last year, there will be no increases. For the first time this year, we'll be offering a payment plan for membership to assist our members by spreading out the payments over two or three-month period leading up to the opening. Details of the plan will be posted shortly. Credit cards were added as a method of payment last year, and will continue to be available this year. Continuing discussions are taking place for ways to enhance membership, entertainment, and sharing ideas on how to have a most successful break season. At the rec center, all of our popular activities will continue this year. Baseball, basketball, volleyball, tennis, pickleball, and all the leagues are getting together to discuss the upcoming season. They are eager to start, and we'll be ready for the two thousand nineteen season. Thank you to all the volunteers of these committees, and thank you to all of our volunteers who work so hard and give us so much of their time to help organize all the activities up at the rec center. We had our final, at the tiny town, we had our final walkthrough last week. I'm happy to announce that there were very little issues that have to be addressed. We will be announcing the grand opening very shortly. We have been, and we'll continue to meet with our neighbors of tiny town to address their concerns, working together, and I'm confident that we can come to a reasonable solution on all their issues. The twenty-second annual bird count will take place in Centennial Gardens on a couple of dates. On Friday, February fifteenth, from three to four. On Saturday, February sixteenth, from twelve to one. And on Sunday, February seventeenth, from one to two. You can come up there to help count the data, spot birds, and pregame on those toys, and dress warm, and dress warm.
Thank you, sir. I mean, we'll guarantee that the bird count will be the coldest days of the year in two days out, so. For some reason, though, it is a good time. I do wanna just piggyback on a couple of things that were said to me. In regard to the meeting with Senator Kaplan, as our Deputy Mayor Kevin Fitzgerald pointed out, a lot of time was spent on the Belmont racetrack development. Again, the issues that we have, of course, the traffic and the overdevelopment of what we consider the overdevelopment of the property, among all the security issues and a number of other issues. I do believe, as Kevin said, that Senator Kaplan has a good grasp on what our issues are and what the problems are, and we will continue the dialogue. But we also talked about the issues with the third track and that construction, and she has offered her help there. And one that I wanna really talk about just briefly is, you may have read in the papers, the governor has proposed eliminating what he calls AIM funding, which is, again, aid to local municipalities in the state of New York. Now, that AIM funding for us represents two hundred and seventy, last year's numbers, two hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars, round numbers. Again, it's about two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, which is just under one percent of our, would be a one percent tax increase. As you won't, we're under a two percent tax cap, and now the governor wants to take away one percent of our revenue. So we are working very closely with the New York Conference of Mayors, the Nassau County Village Officials Association, all of our representatives on the state level to get that funding restored. We get very, very little back from the state. The governor has a habit, as you heard, saw in today's paper, if you read today's News Day, they are now claiming that the revenue for the state of New York is, has fallen off, and that there will be other cuts made. Again, we don't get much back, but we send an awful lot up to Albany. So we may be asking for your help again to contact our local officials as the budget process for the state of New York gets, gets moving, to, to tell them we don't want our AIM funding covered. It's very little, but it's something to give back. And if this continues and progresses, as he said in today's paper, or is saying, now we could lose what little we get in what they call highway funds, which is what they call chips funds, and other small funds that we get from New York State. Those little funds will start getting up. And again, we don't get a lot, but what we can get is very, very important, because we make every dollar count here. I can't say that about New York State, and I won't comment, but, you know, maybe he should watch his pen more than he does watching ours. So I'll leave it at that. With that, I would ask for a motion, unless somebody else has any comments, to close the meeting, and we will open it up to the floor to our residents. So.
Second.
Any, all in favor? All opposed? Again, thank you all for being here, and now we'll open it up to the floor to any residents who might have some issues, or things that they would like to discuss.
That's a long meeting, and we're probably in a hurry to...
No, no, no.
Stay in the meeting.
No. No. No, we're here.
Well, a month ago, one of my peers had a, it's on the floor, about climbing panel and remake and environmental effects to my home and my neighbors. I just wanted tonight to bring to your attention an environmental impact, since the trees were removed and the two-story umbrellas were put up. I have custom-made metal air conditioner covers that clamp to my air conditioners, and for over twenty-five years, I've been hanging them up there and clamping them down and never brought them through hurricane, Irene, and Sandy. They're fine over the end of the weekend. One completely blew off. I don't even know where it is, so if you see my air conditioner cover, some side of it came down as well. I feel that a wind tunnel has been created somehow, because of wind, has always come from that direction, but those two big mules that were there, they were protecting me. So I just wanted to go on record in case I suffer any more property damage, or this is rectified. I know I did walk through, Frank McDonough, and with Bob Graham, and Kurt Mayford, we all went on a walk yesterday through the park, and went to our different parts and discussed some possible solutions. I don't know if we're gonna work with the village architect, I understand?
Yeah, I believe we should. We're working with some technicalists, several of them, Trustee Chair.
Right. So I'm hoping, you know, that this issue can be resolved in addition to our issues of privacy and security and, you know, restore property values, so I just wanted to go on record with that.
And thank you for your comments, and we are doing our best to work with, work as usual. Thank you. Yes, good.
I just like to greet some residents and ask for your help with the problem you're having. We own the heart of my one-six-one, the New York, it's the very last house on one avenue that was found on property. And for some reason, the season of rain seems to be horrendous. There is a flooding issue in the street there, which impinges our front walkway and the driveway. I do have a video, and we'd like to take one minute to look at it to give you an example of what I'm talking about. There was about four inches of water above the curb, which progressed onto the front There was about four inches of water above the curb, which progressed onto the front pathway of the house that the cars were in water to access a car you had to walk in. Then about six inches of water to get to it. We have been looking at this problem. We've had Mr. Zawinski in to take a look at it. I've spoken with Frank Dunbar of Nyra and Evan Harmon of Nyra. He promised to send a vacuum truck to dredge the seaport basins. We understand that they are not connected to anything. There's a major project in the works. We don't know when it's going to happen. We feel something needs to be done immediately. It's dangerous. We have a grandbaby on the way. I don't even know if she could get to the car if she had to. And one of my major concerns is with icy weather coming. It's possible that any precipitation would freeze, and if it's that high over the curb, there's actually no way to address the house safely. And again, I know there's a big project in the works, but I don't think we can wait that long.
Okay, but, as you know, the big project is in the works. We are, actually, I have, I lived on Walnut up until two years ago, and I'm very well aware of what the house looks like.
Why you moved?
No, I actually moved for family reasons, and don't ever say to me, because my wife is still upset, because she loved that house on Walnut and wants to...
Was it that house?
What?
That house?
I'm sorry.
Was it that house?
No, it was actually, but she loved.
It's beautiful out, it freezes the...
Absolutely, absolutely.
White room spaces.
Our block is right now, but she just had, that was her dream home. So, anyway, make a long story short, we do, you do know the project is in the works. The project has moved in the last couple of weeks, and Jerry, we're at the point where we're just waiting on, we've got the opposite of our state, right? Yeah, we've done that. So, we're just waiting now on Nassau County. So, we're going to try and move there and, and the state to give their final, just give their final okay. So, once those two things are done, we can move the project, which will help alleviate the situation. In the meantime, we will contact Nyra ourselves to, if they said that they were going to dredge and use it.
We, all of the village is wonderful. They're very responsive, but it has not really helped.
Yeah, and unfortunately, there are only certain things that we can do, but we, I am very well aware of what it looks like, and sorry.
What concerns us also is that they're addressing the engineering reports. These three locations, we've done it from Walnut.
No, but Walnut is a whole separate project. Those are what we're going to do.
The engineering is complete, right, Steve? The engineering is complete for that project?
For that project.
The engineering is complete for the project on the street?
No, we're, we're, we're...
Not the street?
It's already done.
The funding is there, as we understand it, but again, we've had very good seasons.
Again, just waiting on New York State to give that final okay. Once that's done, we...
Is it anything?
Well, we've been pushing, in fact, my meeting with Senator Kaplan on Saturday, Jerry was there, that was one of the topics that we, so we had their help as well. We talked about this just on Saturday, about moving that project, with the...
About timeframe.
I wish I could tell you the timeframe. I don't want to promise you the timeframe that I don't have.
I'm just really concerned that we have a grandbaby on the way very soon.
Fully understand.
The way through 15 was horrendous, you know, storage of ice, and there was nowhere to put it, there was nowhere to shovel it or plow it, it was all ice.
We'll talk to, we'll talk to Nyra, see if there's anything else we can do on their side so that we can make the water flow out. But the only thing I can tell you is on our end, we have to tie all of that into this, it's all going to be tied in so that, you know, the drainage will help.
I understand. My thought as a non-engineer was, could there possibly be two or seaport basins on their property? It's a very small, elective wedge of land between the road and the fence. It's possible...
Excuse me, the plan for that block is to tie those seaport basins, new seaport basins, into a sun. So, there won't be seaport basins, there will be patch basins there that go directly to the sun. So, once the project's completed, there should be no water on that block.
I understand, but I am looking for more media. Quick fix.
We tried something on Belmont property, I guess you can relate.
They did build Little Brown?
Yeah, we tried to...
Very recently, they trashed the water that goes down. It's totally now, if I could take a minute to just show you...
If you want to show us the video, I've seen it, like I said, but it's, I'm very well aware of what, yeah, please.
Maybe you'll pay.
Yeah, exactly.
No, do something here, Little Brown, but I have this down.
And then, one of the streets, well, and you're attempting to get into my house during a rainstorm.
It's fresh on purpose, it's fresh on purpose.
And, trying to show, there's so much water. It's in my house, we're looking at the curb, it's something about an inch of water, curb. Approaching the walkway to the front of our house, which is underwater. This is the front of the house. Water's completely covering the driveway. Orangutan, it's underwater here, this curb. There's a vehicle completely in water. This is the right end, there's another right end. It's convenient. There's a curb. This is a walkway under the house, and it's under water.
That's it. I can go back and get that point.
Okay.
Yeah. So, you can see the struggle there.
Yeah.
If you can really wait for this big project for something that will help us, I am so concerned about it.
Again, we will take a look at it and talk to Nyra, see if there's anything they can do to alleviate it. I'm not quite sure what can be done at this point, but we will look at every option if there is one that...
Is it possible to get another seaport basin? They're not a feet by five field.
What I was going to ask is, can you email that presentation to us?
To whom?
Can you email that to Dr. Joel?
Yes.
A video, a, Susan, Susan, yes. If you can, I just, because I would like to, still like to make sure that that gets to other people.
And then the street gets broken up, with the bridges in the water, it's going to break it up.
I'll, I'll, you know, we'll, we'll tell DP, we'll see about seaport bases. I don't know, there is something...
Engineers, do you think that would help our engineers, the seaport basin, you know, help some of that?
Again, if it was done, if we, if we technical it, or it is something needed, the engineers would design it then, so, okay?
I understand, yes.
Okay, thank you. But definitely, okay, then can you help them?
Okay.
Exactly. Another question.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again, and again, we understand.
Okay.
My name is Lynn, and I was asked to, you know, my neighbors. And before, I have two issues, but before I start, I want to thank Dr. Pomona, who if you called, said, she knows I was, that's my one issue. She did a great job explaining to me how you all felt and how you were limited, and what you were going to try to deliver to the population, and I really appreciate it a bit. I really, I'm just for Pomona, to ask you a question tonight, and thank you, Lynn, for your time. Okay, so number one, I have a walk. I walk four blocks, six miles a day. Every walk, I walk on the West End, because I like to be near the school, because I taught in the early 40s. And the West End is gorgeous. The renovation people have hundreds of people have renovated their houses, absolutely beautiful. I love to look at the houses, I love to look at the construction. I can't do that anymore, because if I take my eyes off the sidewalk, I'm going to trip and kill myself. There are patch slabs of concrete that are completely up, I can see the bottom of the slab of concrete, concrete. When we moved in the village 42 years ago, I felt that the village was very diligent about marking cement that had been replaced. It may still be happening, maybe you have sections you do one of them.
Actually, that's exactly the way that, that's the way that works.
The West End is dangerous.
What happens is this, we have, we actually break up the village into sections, and we do it in sections, and it rotates, okay? So, we will be getting to the West End, I'm not quite sure when, a couple of years, probably two to three years, I don't really need it. Because I would tell you, it is, all residents do, and are responsible for the sidewalks in front of their homes, to create these programs, and the timeframe in which you can actually pour the cement to get it done, and do all this, you know, we do as big a section as we possibly can each year, and I believe we're in the north end this year at this point, so, and then it will rotate around. So, again, if it is something that is, you know, horrible or things like that, and somebody, you know, somebody gets hurt or something like that, you know, we'll try and do a red wave, or somebody requests it to be done, you know, any, a resident can always do their sidewalk, as long as it meets the, as long as it meets the criteria that we establish on the sidewalk. But, you know, at the same time, the program we have is pretty extensive, it is pretty strong, and it is done to the largest scale we can do it, given the timeframe in which you can pour the cement and get that done, so. And a lot of times, we tie that into roadwork that's being done as well, and things like that, so, you know, again, it's, I'm sorry, I don't care if I speak, but that's the way we are.
Just one thing, after Sandy, we suspended the sidewalk program for two years?
For a year.
A year, so, it's probably higher than the rotation of it, so, one to two years ago.
To walk on West End, really, really dangerous. Okay, this one's true. I feel like I'm putting my light on every time I see some crosswalk on foot, I think. And I will now walk out to the crosswalk, but people see that I'm in crosswalk, and they will fly by, and one time, I'm either like this, and one time a lady asked me, pointing to the green light, saying, screw you, lady, I want to make the light. And I don't know, because I can't imagine having any police presence there. You know, brick and paper, it wasn't real, I don't know what could be done there, but it is really dangerous.
You're talking about the crosswalk in the middle by these? Is that the one you're talking about, or any of the crosswalks?
It's not these.
One in front of these. Okay, again...
Well, I'm happy they don't see all the lights, and I'm happy I don't see me standing in the corner, but you don't care.
I, I would like to say that people will abide by those and do that. As my predecessor has said on many occasions, I can't legislate people's driving habits. The crosswalks are there for people's safety. We hope that people will abide by them. I know, I drive, I stop if I see someone, I actually stopped because someone was crossing in front of, I'm going to wait here tonight, was crossing in front of the beans and not using the crosswalk. So, you know, the reality is that that crosswalk is there. I have seen things like a lady just pushed a baby carriage right out in front without pressing the lights, without the view. So, you know, I have seen it myself. Yes, we are concerned, we are always concerned. There are two crosswalks under 1,500 feet that have controls on them, by the way, there's red lights, you know, stop, traffic signals and things like that. The reality is, is that they are, we just hope that people abide by those. We have given out tickets in the past, so, you know, if a police officer sees something, you know, they do it, but we've seen people just walk out, they have, you know, a false sense of safety by just walking out into a crosswalk and assuming people are going to stop. Unfortunately, in New York City, that's, people, people are conditioned to stop if they see, you know, the light changes, things like that. On Manhattan, it's a little different. And unfortunately, like I said, we can't help, we can't legislate it, we can enforce our laws when we do, but the reality is, is that's what we do.
Yeah, what's interesting is there's a crosswalk from Centeno Park to Athens Street with no lights turning in the night, and when I'm there, people stop, they just stop.
They just stop.
But I'll speak to a family with a white flash on.
Again, it's busy, so a lot of times, you know, they're, they're looking forward, because it is a narrow way to, so. Yeah, but thank you, we definitely understand. We got a great job there, and thank you so much. Mr. Hyman?
Yeah, hold. Listen, do people have a problem with Todd, because I had about 30 minutes worth of stuff.
No, no, no.
I know, why do you have that?
I have a problem with Todd.
Are you okay? Are you okay? Speed for 30 minutes? Thank God, I think the State of Union is... Oh, that's no shit. Oh, God, Mike.
You know what the beauty of that is? You can always watch it on the rearview.
Oh, gee, I can't believe we haven't moved that. Anyhow, listen, this forum is intermunicipal shared services, though, and I happened to be over at Bellrose Village on a Saturday when I saw the group of guys cleaning out a catch basin all day, boy, catch basin, never needed cleaning, it was that one that they did, which is a great idea, a witness village making anything out of this by supplying our work with other villages.
Right now, right now, disagreement, in this agreement here, it's recovering our costs. In the future, we will look to, as possibilities, I, I, we want, this is the first time we're doing this, and we want to see how it will work, okay? Jerry, I, we don't have anything additional, this, this one's...
This is, this is, this is correct, this one we've structured to statistically figure out how to do this and cover the cost, and in the future make it mutually beneficial. This is just eight bases, let's see how it works out.
Yeah, I think it's great, I think, I mean, the guys make overtime on a Saturday and build...
Again, you know, we're not, we're covering, and Bellrose, that's...
What about interagency with Bellrose? Commissioner McCall's, they put a proposal to Bellrose Village, what, maybe three, four years ago?
That's probably one of the...
I mean, there's an opportunity, I think the village has, and Bellrose ought to wake up to this opportunity, for our police department to police that village, and let them pick up a big part of the cost of our police department. I mean, our streets are continuous, it's not a case of you have to go around barriers to get in there.
I think this is the position we all have, is that we will look at any opportunities to work with our neighboring villages and people, as long as it's not going to be detrimental, you know, to, to us in the financial or urban by way of resources. I, we're open to that, and I think that's part of what is going on here. I think some of the other villages are seeing, you know, especially Bellrose that we've been, you know, we've offered the police department, we've offered the library, we've offered, you know, when I was library commissioner, we had a whole plan to offer library services. They decided they didn't want to do it at the time. It's okay, but, you know, again, one, we'll never do it at where it's a detriment to the village, both financially or again for our services, and two, if it's mutually beneficial somehow, or beneficial to us on a positive end, then, then, out of us, let's try it. So, you know, the reality is, we will always look at the options.
All right, that was one of the 30 minutes of time that I wanted to take up.
We have more issues, okay.
Are we doing anything about the intersections with Bridlock? Are we trying to get some cops out there?
We have, we have...
Is it calling people overall?
We have, we're already visioned tickets, we are now, Nassau County is just...
We just said, where they approved the don't block the box, they approved one of the turn lanes, and they are working on the consolidation, all as part of the recovery...
I think they're painting the intersections with a big box that, that keep out...
Somebody will, somebody will paint it.
Yeah, we're with the county, we are...
We just have to wait for the warm weather, so it adheres, the paint adheres. Yeah, okay, so, okay, but we've been out there, we've issued over 40 don't block the box summons, and we've issued more warnings than summonses, but we haven't shared.
And actually, who loves intersection, it's the county intersection.
Yeah, that's all we do, that's what we do for the explanation.
All right, listen, I'll take the other 20 minutes if it's...
I'm going to stay here, we'll return.
Is there anybody else? Doctor, okay? Frank, all right? Mr. Holt, he's on his way up.
I'm old, I'm here, I'm... I have spoken with the detective, the commissioner a lot of times, about a vehicle that parks up in that empty street. They've gotten back to me a couple of times with dates and whatever, but it's getting disturbing now, because it's a two-family house, double garage, five cars confined. I don't know why this woman is calling up the park on the street with an empty driver. Now she got a ticket Friday morning, read to everybody, now she went down to the police station and had it dismissed. What's going on? I know, this is what was said, this is what she told the landlord, that's why...
Police can, I...
See, I know, I'm just saying what's coming out, because it goes somewhere else, okay? He has gotten back to me a couple of times with dates of this woman, I have written down from the neighbor, that she's been there 12 times since Lake Memorial. This time, she's to get a summons, I saw the summons on the car, she told the landlord she brought it down to the police station, and he took care of it. But she has told him in the past that she has talked to the dispatcher on the phone, and if you look up, I can give you the plate number, the address, and you'll see how many days she has parked, because you have got back at least two or three times, and she has legitimately, but there's no meter for it.
She's...
I just want to go back to the summons.
I know. I agree with that.
She can say whatever she wants.
Yeah, the landlord looks bad, you know what I'm saying? She's... Basically, she's making a monitor, so, you know what I'm saying? Two years.
How much is the address again?
273. You've gotten back a couple of times, she has called up, but now this is what she's doing now, like she's making a monitor, you know, and we do monitor it according to you guys, I've got 10 days alone since Lake Memorial. Like I said, it's a five-car shop, it's a two-family house, you know, and she made it, only four days, that she got dismissed by 10 hours.
I guess that she can say whatever she wants.
I agree, but I'd rather come here and have them get it done, I'll go back to tell them it's not true, like I have done before, because they said, oh, she told me, and she really is, and I have no idea what's going on, if it's a two-deep family house, it's leaving now, that's the thing I'm trying to hook at, because apparently she has to park the greens according to the landlord, you know what I'm saying? But like, it's getting blown out, everybody on the whole lot is in the know of that. If they go through the ticket, now you should blow out, tell them everybody, I had it dismissed. You know, I, you know, I know, but it's...
Not the misses of dismissing tickets.
I agree 100%, but it just, this is what's going on with this house, and we really have to look into it, which, and I, like I said, I got 10 days of the dates he gave back, I mean, that she called up, he done it twice for me, and what is she doing? You know what I'm saying? We're supposed to...
If I could answer the question, though, I have the time, we've been preaching, but...
Well, as long as you have to stay when you come down, or have the construction done, or have relatives staying, you know, you know what I'm saying? But against is what's happening, okay? I mean, I'm coming, I'm certainly coming, you know, and now I got food, it's going to go somewhere. I got a meeting.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Okay. Again, thank you all, it's been very early, I do appreciate everybody staying, appreciate you, Bill, thank you. So, and then, we'll see you over, so, thank you, yourself.